This is 27th, we do have a quorum. And so Harrison lives in the.
All right. Heavenly Father, we come to you in the precious name of Jesus, thank you for this day. I ask you to bless each one that's assembled here, forgiving us your spirit and your wisdom and knowledge and understanding, that we can be a unity and that we could be a blessing to the community. And we'll be grateful to give you the praise and glory in Jesus' holy name. All right, we ready for the pledge? Ready, set, and pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Corr, would you call the roll, please?
Here.
Stevens?
Here.
Reed?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
Harrison?
Here.
Pritchard?
Here.
Mayor?
Here. We, on citizens' comments on non-agenda items, residents by address, council regarded an item that's not listed on the agenda. Residents must provide their name and address, and council requests the comments be limited to five minutes. Didn't have anybody sign up, is there anyone in the audience? Seeing no one, we will go to the consent agenda. All matters listed on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be separate discussion of these items, if discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. The agenda tonight consists of A, approval of minutes from July 26, 2019, special meeting of McAllister City Council; B, approval of minutes from the August 13, 2019, special meeting of McAllister City Council; C, approval of claims for August 7, 2019 through August 20, 2019; D, consider and act upon accepting the change order from Western Interior, the amount of $4,520 for the painting of the library trim; E, consider and act upon a request by Charles Everett on behalf of Savannah High School to partner with them for the rental fee and use of Room 101 in McAllister Expo Center for the annual ACT prep testing; F, consider and act upon a request by Charles Everett on behalf of Savannah High School to partner with them for the rental fee and use of Room 101 of the McAllister Expo Center for annual ACT prep testing; G, consider and act upon indefinitely postponing tort claim filed by Lindley's Paint and Body Shop; and H, consider and act upon indefinitely postponing tort claim filed by Summer Barone. Would anyone like anything removed?
On H, could someone explain that?
Well, we'll have to remove it, and then we'll talk.
Okay.
Any, anyone else?
D.
D? Anyone else? All right, I take a motion and a second to approve items A, B, C, E, F, and G. Motion, Councilman Reed, second Councilman Brown, any discussion? Corr, would you call the roll, please?
Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Yes, and the motion carries, we'll just go from the top down. Councilman Pritchard.
Has this work already been completed?
It has.
Is this the, I don't know much about change orders.
Sure.
Is this typically how it works, is the work gets completed and then we approve the expenditure?
It's within my authority and it falls within the 15% allowable on the state bidding process, so 15% is about almost $6,000 of the original bid. So I approved the change order in order because the contractor was, he was gonna have to pull off and wouldn't be back for quite some time because they were going to another big job. So we had him finish the job. What this is, is handrails, steps, things that we didn't think about when we first put the bid out.
So, so this is, I don't know how to describe this, but the big green part of the building? You know what I mean, so there's, the building, I guess, has like windows and then, because it's all concrete exterior.
And then there's things that come down.
Yeah, and that got painted green, is this part of that change order?
No, this is almost all related to handrails. We also had them power wash everything ahead of time, the handrails and the stairs. And then, when you walk in, the main part of the library off of the parking lot, we had all those stairs power washed and then painted bright yellow, so there weren't any tripping hazards going forward. A lot of stuff like that.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Take a motion and a second to approve item D, motion, Councilman Smith. Second Councilman Brown, any further discussion? Corr, would you call the roll, please?
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries, item H, Councilwoman Harrison.
Oh, all right. If you don't mind, I would like Attorney Urban to explain item number H, please.
I guess, that's my standing instruction to the county clerk, when she gets a tort claim, we need to, because it comes before the council, we need to allow some time for the insurance company to investigate the claim, to see if it's a meritorious claim and if they want to settle, you know, or try to settle it or do something with it. But it's really just to buy an additional 90 days in order to allow the insurance company to investigate the claim. So what I've asked the clerk to do is just to have it, have you all postpone it. At the end of 90 days, the claim is deemed denied. And so, at that point, the claimant is available, is free to file suit. They can't file suit for that 90 days. But if they wish to file suit, they'd have to wait until the 90 days passes to allow the insurance company time to investigate the claim.
Okay, are you saying it's automatically denied during that time, or it's just a process?
I think if we approved the claim initially, without giving the opportunity to the insurance company to investigate, then we would have waived our coverage. And then we would end up paying the claim, and the insurance company would be off the hook. But we have a contract with the liability carrier to provide that coverage. And so, really, it's theirs to consider, and they should investigate the claim during that time. If it just comes up for approval, then they have no time to investigate the claim.
Okay, so has, the reason I'm asking, because she's a Ward 5 resident, and she told me about the situation. And so I'm aware of it a little bit.
I looked at the pictures and all, and I would agree that it looks like there may be a claim there. But the insurance carrier needs to, and I did check the exemptions, and it doesn't appear to be falling any exemptions to the Tort Claims Act. But that, you know, before the Tort Claims Act, we did not have any right to insure against this type of casualty. But now we do, but there are limits and conditions. And one of those is that 90-day period where they can't sue. And so we need to take advantage of that in the city in order to allow our insurance carrier to investigate the claim.
Okay, and she is aware of this 90-day time?
I don't know if she is or not, apparently you weren't.
No, that's the reason I'm bringing it up.
I needed to explain that, because I didn't realize that, you know, we tend to also for them.
Okay, that's all right, that's why I'm bringing it up.
If you would, if you just mentioned it to her, that we're not denying her claim.
Okay.
But we are allowing the insurance company to look into it, and she, apparently, according to this note, it has already been referred to our insurance company.
I see that.
So they should be contacting her to investigate the claim and see if it's a meritorious claim. And they can settle this claim if we do it, without the city being involved.
Oh, okay.
But, but we need to allow our insurance company that opportunity.
Oh, okay, all right, thank you so much, appreciate it, thank you for having me.
Any other questions?
I'm gonna ask Councilor one thing. Now, if this, if this is denied, does she have a right to appeal at any place?
She has a right to sue.
Oh, yes.
She's forestalled from suing under our law until the 90 days passes. At that time, the claim is deemed denied, if you all don't take it back and, you know, do something with it before that 90 days.
Okay, because I've seen some of these claims, and usually they don't get paid.
Well, I think hers might be.
Yeah, I think they're always, that's my point.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Take a motion and a second to approve item H, motion, Councilman Smith. Second Councilman Reed, any discussion? Corr, would you call the roll, please?
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries. We're on to public hearing, all persons interested in any ordinance listed under scheduled business will have an opportunity to be heard in accordance with Article 2, Section 212B of the City Charter. We have two tonight, the first is an ordinance amending Chapter 106 Utilities of the McAllister City Code, amending Article 6 Regulations of Utility Lines, amending Chapter 48 Fees, Charges, and Service Rates, repealing all conflicting ordinances and providing for severability. The second is an ordinance of the City of McAllister, Oklahoma, establishing, amending Ordinance Number 2626, which established the budget for fiscal year 2018 and 2019, repealing all conflicting ordinances and providing for a severability clause and declaring an emergency. Take a motion and a second to open the public hearing, motion, Councilman Reed, second Vice Mayor Stevens, any discussion? Corr, would you call the roll, please?
Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, we are now in a public hearing, would anybody like to address this concerning the first? Seeing no one, anybody want to address this second? Still seeing no one, I take a motion and a second to close public hearing, motion, Councilman Reed, second Vice Mayor Stevens, any discussion? Corr, would you call the roll, please?
Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, we're on to agenda item number one, consider and act upon an ordinance amending McAllister City Code, Chapter 106 Utilities, Article 6 Regulation of Utility Lines, amending Chapter 48 Fees, Charges, and Service Rates, repealing all conflicting ordinances and providing for severability. Ms. Clifton?
Good evening. This item comes before you due to a request from a utility services provider wanting to put small wireless facilities in a right-of-way. And also, there were some changes in state law under the Oklahoma Small Wireless Facilities Act. When we went to go review the request, we found in the codes that they were a little bit dated. It all pertained to lines that were underground, not above ground. So we felt that there was a need to update that, to put what we were doing, you know, in the codes. We initially brought the ordinance to you in May 28. And due to some concerns with the local utility companies, we ended up pulling that, met with them twice, and made sure that what we were doing with these codes worked with, you know, their business model and some of the things that they do internally. So we made some of those changes, also made some changes there for, like in the event of emergency, and to allow them to be able to work without having to go through the permitting and the permitting fee and so forth. So basically, that's what we did with this, and we just request an approval to this ordinance to update it.
Any questions? Take a motion and a second to, motion, Councilman Smith. Second Councilwoman Harrison, any further discussion? Corr, would you call the roll, please?
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, the motion carries, thank you. We're on to agenda item number two, consider and act upon ordinance, amending ordinance Number 2626, which established the budget for fiscal year 2018, 2019, repealing all conflicting ordinances, providing for severability clause and declaring an emergency. Ms. Urban?
Mayor, Council, Exhibit A1 is Fund 11, and our employment, employee retirement fund, and it's a budget amendment to account for the extra payments that were made throughout the year when retirees are added to the list. Exhibit A2 is for grants and contributions that were made close to the end of the year, so that we can just account for those balances in the budgets. We love this fund, because this is the July 4th, where First National Bank donated the $10,000, the extra expense for the different parks, and the OSU Wellness is a grant, so.
Free money?
Free money, we like to partner with people.
Any questions? Take a motion and a second to approve, motion, Councilman Reed, second Councilman Smith, any further discussion? Corr, would you call the roll, please?
Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries, agenda item number three, discussion and update on, oh, I'm sorry. Take a motion and a second on the emergency, motion, Councilman Reed, second Vice Mayor Stevens, any discussion? Corr, would you call the roll, please?
Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries, now on to agenda item number three, discussion and update on financials.
This is as of July 31st, the general fund at a glance. We are slightly under budget in our revenues, and slightly over in expenditures, exactly the opposite of what you want to be. But a lot of our expenditures are front-end loaded, and this is the first month of our fiscal year, so we pay upfront. So it explains the expenditures, and then the, and when we look at the sales tax a little later, you'll see that the sales tax is actually up. The revenues on the MPWA is slight, they are slightly under budget, and the, but the expenditures are even more under budget. And then we go to the next page, and we have the sales tax through August. And as you can see, July was up for sales tax, even above the last two years. And then August is right, almost exact where we were last year. And then the following one is the use tax, and we have July and August numbers for you. And again, August numbers are way up. And again, the trend line really shows that this one is continually going up. The water sales and the water districts, it's been a wet year, what can I say? Our revenues are down in both compared to last year at this time. But if you look at July numbers, they were actually like the end of May and June timeframe. So that was when we were very wet and getting a lot of rain. And then, then the final report is your cash in the bank, the treasurer's report.
Any questions, comments?
I've got a question, what can we do to make an adjustment if we're expending more than we're taking in? What needs to be changed?
On the revenues and expenditures, we budget according to, you know, what we estimated, and this just says that we, the expenditures are more than we, I mean, it's, they're within the, the, how can I say this? They're within, they're, they're, the overage is immaterial, as far as that's within 1%, less than 1% above what we are, and the expenditures are above that because we have big software IT expenses that we pay a year in advance, because that's the way they want to be paid. And so we expense them all in July, so that tends to average out over the year, so.
So are you saying allocate money, but it's just not enough, is this what you're saying?
No, these are actual expenditures, we just had more expenditures in the month of July than we did revenues.
Thank you.
We tend to look at the city over a year's period of time. This is a snapshot, one month.
Okay.
And it is front-loaded, this will all equal itself out over a year.
Okay.
And if we, if we happen to see that our revenues are not meeting budget, and our expenditures are up, we will adjust internally as to how we manage the city. And we do that throughout the entire year. So we watch these numbers very closely, and we adjust accordingly.
Could you give us an example of what would be in an adjustment?
We might hold back a little bit on maybe some street improvements or a street improvement project, put more effort into using our equipment, and maybe cleaning some things instead of going out and spending $50,000 on a road. But we would keep our crews busy with needed efforts within the city.
That would cost less?
That would cost less, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Just one other thing, we do a mid-year budget review that comes to the council.
Okay.
So we'll be, we're kept up on it in that manner as well.
Okay, all right, thank you.
The fund balances on this, I did forget, it's estimated until we get through our audit. And so these, these are estimated fund balances for the beginning of the year. Once we do our adjusting entries and everything is passed by our auditors, then I take that estimated off of the report.
Any other questions or comments? We will move to agenda item number four, discussion of possible action on the inclusion of bike lanes to be created along 14th Street from South Street to MacArthur, and along MacArthur from 14th Street to 9th Street. Vice Mayor Stevens?
Thank you. Just to kind of bring the council up to speed on kind of how this came about, a couple discussions, the mayor and myself had a couple discussions, as well as the city manager too, but there was a post, I'm realizing more and more how social media plays into our lives, but there was a post that the mayor was tagged in, and I started reading that, and then I was also tagged in about basically increased speed, and you've seen some of these traffic surveys we just got from the police department this evening, along 14th Street. This is something that I've gotten a lot of calls on since I've been a councilman, with speed on 14th Street, really on MacArthur, on 13th as well. Basically, where there's a lot of families living in these areas, children that bike and walk, we have the school system right there as well too, but really just an issue of speed. That, you know, it's, it's a road that I'm not gonna throw stones at people for speeding, I wish they wouldn't, but I've also got pulled over for speeding yesterday, so, in the city of McAllister. So therefore, as much as I'd like to say that this is bad people at times, this is not. This is people that I think naturally with the tendency that we have in some of our streets and roads along 14th especially, it's a clear shot. It's all the way from the last stop sign you see is on MacArthur. And looking at the comprehensive plan, talking to the city manager and the mayor as well, I think this is a small way that we can start to include some different forms of transportation along 14th there, and then tying back into our parks and other things as well. But it's also something that can help mitigate the speed over time. And there's also a stop sign that needs to be placed in here as well, and I've proposed somewhere around Illinois, where we make it a three-way stop, just like on MacArthur. I don't know if any of you guys received the articles by center, if you had time to review those, I apologize, I didn't get them to you sooner. But I thought this was a good way for us to discuss as a council, and especially within light of the comprehensive plan. And if you guys want to, I brought it with me, I can pass it around. Page 130 actually defines exactly what we're talking about tonight, it's called a complete street. Where we add these forms, it's a way to kind of mitigate speed and traffic on those forms, but I figured we could discuss it. And wanted to go forward, we could approve that this evening to start along this process as well.
I like the idea of bike lanes, I think it'd be great if we had them virtually every city in town.
Yeah.
But, and I do think it definitely needs to be a stop sign in Illinois. Something we do need to add, when we, when we do this though, is I don't think we have it now, is we need an ordinance that addresses if the car drives in a bike lane.
Okay.
So we need to make it, make it where it's safe, and where there's, you know, a penalty if you, if you put other people in danger.
Absolutely.
Councilwoman Harrison?
Is it okay to address directly?
You're actually supposed to address.
Okay, all right. How is the bike registration, how is that coming along with the police department, if we're gonna have a bike lane?
We will probably have it on the September 24th agenda.
That's correct, yeah. We have the preliminary draft at this time.
Okay, and, you know, I don't know what other word to say, but people are calling certain folks bike bandits. That's the nicest way to put it. How is that gonna be addressed, you know, people that are just on their bikes?
Well, I think, I think, on that, I think you probably need to put that in your, in the, your comments at the end of the meeting.
Okay.
Because it's, it's not actually covered in, under this.
All right, thank you.
Any, any, Councilman Reed?
I have to apologize, Mr. Stacey, he told me he only had five minutes to talk about this. But, when I saw this on the agenda, and first of all, I'd like to just say I don't oppose bike lanes. As long as the bike lanes are, you know, are safe, not only for the bicyclists, but also for the motoring public. And you can, you know, safely install these in the streets that we have. But when I saw this, and I'm not even sure how I heard about it, that it was being done in order to address speed on 14th and MacArthur. And I know from experience that a lot of times people believe that people are speeding, because it's a perception. They don't know that, they just perceive that they're speeding. And a lot of times, it's because there's an increased level of traffic. It could be because of loud mufflers, all kinds of things, but it's not necessarily because people are actually speeding. And if that's the reason, if that's the reason we're installing these bike lanes, I think we need to address that part. So, since I know that the police department aggressively investigates complaints, all complaints, and I would assume they would investigate speeding complaints on 14th and MacArthur. Monday, I asked Chief Woznick, how many speeding tickets have been written on 14th Street and on MacArthur in the last 12 months? And the answer was, on 14th Street, there was nine tickets written on MacArthur, there were seven. That's not even one of them. That doesn't indicate to me that there's a speeding problem on either one of those streets. Just means that you got some people that happened to be in the wrong place at the wrong time. But Chief Woznick took that, and he did some directed patrol, had some radar run on 14th Street on the, what's the day, Monday and Tuesday, I guess. And that's where this traffic survey came from. And with the exception of the three second ward violators who actually live on 14th Street, those were the only tickets that were written. So, once again, I think the speed on 14th Street is a perception on, on the park people. And if that's the reason we're putting the bike lanes in, I would suggest we reevaluate that. If we're putting the bike lanes in because we want to put bike lanes in to make it safer for bicyclists to, to navigate through the streets, fine, let's, let's, let's address it from that perspective. But I don't think we should be addressing it from a speed perspective, because I don't think that's the case here. So one other thing I did was, I went out there and I looked at these two streets, and I measured, see how wide they were. And they're 26-foot wide, which is the minimum width of a local street according to our city ordinance. Now, I couldn't find anything in our city ordinance that talks about what type of streets bike lanes can be put in, the placement within the street, the size of the bike lanes, anything, I can't find anything, I don't know if there's anything in there, I'm just missing it. But I don't see anything in our city ordinance that talks about bike lanes on city streets. We talked briefly about bike paths, and that the city council can designate what a bike path is, and where you can put it, and things like that. But there's nothing that talks about, that gives the city council guidance other than just a shoot from the hip at what feels good, whether or not you should put a bike path in a street or not. And I suggest that that's, that's kind of reckless to do that, because, you know, it can be dangerous. If you narrow those lanes too much, for example, on 14th Street, you have storm drains on both sides of that street, which means you can't put the bike path in that, in that two-foot curb area. So you've lost four feet of the street just because of that. And then if you put a four-foot wide bike lane in there, now you're down to 18 feet on the width on 14th Street. A nine-foot lane for each, each lane of traffic. The recommended width, the minimum width for travel lanes is 10 feet. Now, I'm not saying, I mean, this, this goes along with our warrants for a, for a 26-foot wide street, because you're allowed to put an eight-foot parking lane in there. Now, there's no parking allowed on 14th Street, and there's no parking in the street on, on MacArthur. However, on MacArthur, there's only one no parking sign on that entire street, and that's right there in front of Mike Dickfield. There's several on 14th. You've got some other signs issues on 14th and, and, in MacArthur. You've got some other signs issues on Fourteenth and, and, in MacArthur. On, on Fourteenth, the speed limit is thirty miles an hour. But if you turn off, if you turn off the Fourteenth onto MacArthur, there's not a speed limit sign that goes down to twenty-five miles an hour until you get down to the park. There's nothing in that block between Thirteenth and Fourteenth. They're, they don't know how fast or what the speed limit is. They're coming off of thirty mile an hour street, but technically they're going on twenty-five, but it's not marked. Signage, I tell you, signage is terrible on, on MacArthur and on Fourteenth Street. If you, if you want people to obey the law, you need to tell them what that law is. And I mean, I don't even know how you could enforce it really. I mean, it'd be difficult based upon the signs that's out there right now. But what I'd like to, I'd like to see the city staff do is, and we're, Mr. Stevens tells me we're fixing to put bike lanes on Monroe. I'd, I'd like to see some in our, in our ordinance and it's, it's sixty-two dash six oh six, I think. It talks about streets. It talks about sizes of, you know, parking and things like that. I'd like to see something about these bike lanes added to that. So, so that everybody knows what the minimum street requirements are. What, what's the minimum width of these bike lanes? Where can you put them? Rather than just sending a couple of guys out, out, out to Fourteenth Street with a paintbrush and a bicycle stencil and tell them just do it. You know, there, there's more involved in that.
Mr. Hornick, he was here earlier, but he's gone now.
So anyway, those are my, like I said, I don't oppose the bike lanes. But I, I do think there, there needs to be more thought put into it. And there needs to be something in our ordinances that addresses bike lanes. This is, this is something new, you know, that we're doing here in McAllister. And I, I think that, you know, we need to do that upfront before we start going out stenciling streets.
Vice Mayor Stevens.
I, I really don't disagree with really the majority, if not all of it, that Councilman Reed said. I think he makes a lot of valid points. I think a lot of it's very true. I think this is, in giving you my reasoning a little bit for why I, I think that this is a good decision to go forward with it is that it does accomplish a lot of the things that you just discussed. If we say this is just for speed and speed only, then I'm, I'm not gonna, I don't think that's necessarily true. I don't think that that's, that's wrong. But I think it helps accomplish a lot of the things that the comprehensive plan tried to tackle with us and tell us that we need to have some other speed mitigating things as well as we need to make it easily, more easily accessible for people in our community to travel around without just cars. I think he's right on maybe creating something in our codes as well that helps us tackle this. Because going forward, I would, I would guess, and Pete, please correct me if I'm wrong, that a lot of our streets are varying in size. They're not always, and then I would assume in our older neighborhoods, that really probably varies through probably newer streets when they became more standardized at times. So I think going forward, I think that would be a great decision to start trying to tackle that, think about it, because this isn't something that I think should go away. I, this is something that we need to address as a council and make it easier and more, more easily accessible for lots of different people being on just driving a car. So I would like to make the motion to approve what we're discussing tonight with the addition of the stop signs, but then also work on adding this to our language with the bikes, what Councilman Reed said as well.
Let me sit, let me sit first.
To refresh my memory, you know, we had that plan for walking tracks or walking paths.
Can I hold you out, hold you out for a second so I can see if there's a second to the motion? Let me see if there's, is there a second? Second, but Councilwoman Harrison, it wouldn't come out.
On that plan, did we have bicycle?
We have on, on and off-street, we have all means of transportation. We have bike lanes designated. We have sidewalks designated. We have paths that we will be walking paths, bike paths. It'll be built throughout the city. There's a mul-, we do. There are multiple, multiple avenues.
Are these streets included in that plan?
That is, we, we didn't check the plan, but I can tell you that that plan is just kind of an overall footprint of an idea. That plan is gonna, is gonna be adapted to the needs of this city. You know, there's some areas where you can't put a bike lane in, but you can put a sidewalk in the right of way to move people. So you can ride your bike on the sidewalk or you could walk on the sidewalk. There's some areas where you want to tie in different areas of the community so you can put in a bike path that goes along the power line or a drainage ditch or those type of things, so.
So I'm just wondering if we ought to look at that plan?
We can.
See what streets or the primary, I was kind of, how did you pick Fourteenth and MacArthur?
Fourteenth and MacArthur, this is where I had told you we had been contacting on Facebook and other things. And I thought this was a good way to start exploring this option, but it also used a little bit of a pilot. I don't live that far away from here. I drive this pretty frequently. I see policemen patrolling it quite often. To me, this is an area, it's around the school system there. It's close to the park. I see a lot of people walking down the street. I see people riding their bicycles and I see people sometimes with perception, possibly so too. But I thought this was a good area for us to try it in an area that is getting more traffic. I get a lot of families that contact me from this that want to see more sidewalks so their kids can walk to school. This is one of those ones that I look at and go, well, I would like to see someday our whole, our city as a whole add a lot of these elements to it to make it easier on the rest of our community. People possibly that don't have cars and things like that. But I also look at this as a, a really good pilot area to start this process, to see how our citizens react, to see if this is something that we want. Because overwhelmingly, since I've started this discussion or I've had people, I've had people reach out to me on this. Now, do I believe this is the sole purpose to mitigate speed and traffic? No, I don't. Do I think that this can help and this can lead to other discussions about possibly, why are we designing our roads in the way that encourages speed and traffic? Yeah, I do. But I think this is why I've, I've gone this direction here, Councilman Smith.
Well, I'm just thinking maybe if we looked at that overall plan, we could prioritize where we start our pilot program for bike lanes where they would, this may be the best place. I don't know. I'm kind of like Travis and thinking we need an ordinance and maybe look at that plan and see where are the bike lanes, the best places for them to move the most number of people by bicycle. And I don't see it much as a speed thing, but a bicycling thing.
I see it as, as a component, if I may. I see it as a component that actually, it all fits together. You know, if the research, the articles I said, the stuff I've read, it shows that the wider the street typically, the faster the people drive. I think that's very true. I think in reality though too, as well as a community, we continue to stretch and stretch and stretch. And we look at the highway and what's happening on those plans right now and how fast people drive out there. It, it shouldn't be like that in our city streets. We ought to accommodate lots of different forms of traffic. In this area, we get a lot of different forms of transportation with bikes, walking, cars, things like that. So to me, pilot this out, it ties into our trails.
I get a lot of speeding on Sixth Street.
Yeah.
I just figure it's enforcement, you know?
Well.
Some people are going to drive, it doesn't matter where they are, they're going to drive.
No, you're absolutely right.
It's like one of the articles you had and, you know, you know, the rural people on little country roads, they're sixty miles an hour.
And it, it may, it struck me in that, that article that I sent you too, is that it defines rural, kind of rural America and it talks about rural Oklahoma. Seventy-seven percent of the deaths of pedestrians are in rural Oklahoma. I would classify us as rural Oklahoma. And I, I think this is a way for us to tackle and go forward in tying into the master plan and things like that.
Those city folks don't have any time to get up to speed, you know? They have traffic jam. So what do you think, Pete?
You know, as, as we've started addressing this, we've been able to get a lot of information on, ODOT has a program called Safe Routes to School that we will be requesting grant applications in the future. You know, what you want to focus on is how you're going to move some of those smaller kids. So we look, we look at the schools and how you grow that out and be able to move those kids safely. You know, I live south of town as everybody's aware of. And I see kids every day walking on the grass down Ninth Street trying to get to South. You know, they could cut back over to the park, but they're coming down Ninth Street. There's no sidewalks. They're walking on the grass. It's just a route system that we need to focus on all of our schools and start building that system.
So to this specifically, what do you think?
About bike routes?
Well, these bike routes.
I, I don't, I don't ride Fourteenth Street. As everybody knows, I'm an avid bike rider. I don't ride it. It's too narrow for me. I stick more to wider streets, some of the back streets. I don't know. I haven't been on Fourteenth Street on my bike. But I'll ride it. I ride MacArthur. MacArthur, I feel pretty safe on. If I, can I ask a quick question? Councilman, you said that you measured MacArthur. Is it wider?
It's about foot wide.
Okay.
Just, I measured it at twenty-seven. I measured it at the corner of Thirteenth and MacArthur.
Councilman Pritchard. How much is this going to cost? What do you think this is going to cost?
About a buck and a half a foot to paint stripes on the, on the roadway. We've looked into that. If you have to start changing out the grates on the stormwater grates, those grates can be pulled. You can change the diagonal, the, the direction of them and be able to use that grate somewhere else in the city. But you are going to incur that cost, but you'll have that other grate to, to use somewhere else. There's not a tremendous amount of money involved in putting in bike routes. You have some signage. I can tell you that we have a T-SET grant. It's been awarded to the city and I believe we have thirty. Do you remember Stephanie, how many, how many signs we have for, for bike routes in storage right now for the future? So we'll be able to identify those off-street bike lanes. So.
Did you say, how much? A dollar and a half?
About a dollar and a half a foot for paint.
So what are we talking, how far are we talking about doing on Fourteenth Street?
From south to MacArthur.
Okay. It's about thirteen hundred feet. Oh, that's not right.
The last numbers I saw was about a dollar and a half.
That's, that's half of it. I'm sorry. It's about twenty-six hundred feet. Councilman Harrison.
In this measurement that was done, is that including just a standard vehicle? Or are we talking about trucks, you know, that are going through there? What, you're talking about this twenty-six feet wide? What, what was, you know, what did that entail?
We tend to.
Is it just a standard vehicle?
We tend to focus on passenger vehicles.
Okay. And then also, is it going to be a two-sided bike lanes or just on one side?
That hasn't been determined.
And then when we're talking about bicycles, there's some that are three-wheelers. Is that considered a bicycle too?
It's called a tricycle.
A tricycle, right? I see that.
It's a non-motorized vehicle, yeah.
So is that included in it?
Yes.
Okay. Right, thank you.
Here, Councilman Brown.
I was listening to the council and talk about the speed now. If it drops down to thirty-five to twenty-five, is that going to be a problem? Somebody get a ticket. Maybe they don't know it's twenty-five. Does that take care of all the extra problem with the ticket? Or do we need to change anything to make it thirty-five instead of twenty-five?
I think, I think what he said was it's, it's thirty on Fourteenth.
Thirty, I'm sorry.
Twenty-five on MacArthur, but it's not marked on MacArthur.
So it needs to be marked. So.
Something else that I noticed in the city code was that in a, for a local street, twenty-six feet wide, the speed limit is supposed to be twenty-five miles an hour. But yet Fourteenth Street is forty, is thirty miles an hour.
It's going to be changed.
If you go by the city code, it should be.
Councilman, what we'll be doing is sending out traffic control this week to determine consistency in the area and make sure that we're following the ordinances. Councilman Reed brought up some, some interesting questions about consistency out there. We need to make sure that we are consistent in how we, how, how the traveling public is notified what those speed limits and everything are out there. So we'll be, we'll be working on that this week.
Okay. Is this something we need to rush into with Councilman, going to you, Mayor? Is it something that we could delay a little bit till we can get all the studies? Would, would the Honorable Vice Mayor be there? I was okay with that.
To me, I, I don't really think that this is anything other than approving this area and then allow city staff to actually target it and start investigating it. I mean, if, if it's going to cost twenty-five thousand dollars to do this, I'm fairly certain the city manager is going to come back before us and say, hey, guys, this is something that maybe we should hold off on. But with everything that we've seen in the comprehensive plan, the discussion we had last council meeting on it, I don't see that there's any holdup to doing this or at least starting the process on it because they're going to be doing it on Monroe already. I do remember that from the discussion and Councilman Reed bringing it up as well. And then with this, I, I don't see this as two different areas in our community that we can actually look at, target and see going forward. I would like to go ahead and go forward with the vote tonight, but I don't think this binds in any such way as it has to be done immediately. I just think it's something that we add the stop signs. They're on Illinois or View, one of those. And then we also proceed forward with the bike lanes with the discussion on that because I think that this comprehensive plan is going to address, enforce us to start looking at a lot of new things. And I think if we don't continually refer to it and see where it is and hear from our citizens that helped put all this together, it wasn't just some outside firm that came in and decided who we were going to be and then told us that. I mean, they came in with an outside eye, looked at it and said, hey, here's some things, but here's a lot of the things your city said. This is one of the things that they targeted and talked a lot about. So I'd like to see us go forward with it this evening.
Would you, would you be willing to amend it to the inclusion of the bike lanes upon completion of the, the ordinance being, ordinances being presented to the council? Because like I said, I think we definitely need one to protect the bike riders. And that would be fun. And we do need to, we do need to establish what a bike lane is.
That'd be fun.
Yes, sir. Would you, would you take that second? Who, Councilwoman Harrison second? Would you be okay with that amended ordinance?
Yes, I think it's great.
Did, did you have?
No, I was, I was going to say, we need to do anything else.
Is there any, any further discussion? Cor, would you call her out, please?
Vice Mayor Stevens?
Yes.
Councilwoman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, the motion carries. We are on to new business. Any matter not known or which could not have been reasonably foreseen prior to the time of posting the agenda in accordance with section three-one-one point nine, title twenty-five Oklahoma state statutes. Do we have any new business?
We do not, Mayor.
In that case, let's go to the city manager's report.
Mayor, members of the council, just a couple of items for you tonight. First and foremost, I want to congratulate Jamie Clifton. Jamie was recognized last week at the Chamber of Commerce Dinner, annual dinner, as the Community Development Director, Community Leader of the Year for her work with the comprehensive plan and the work that she does in planning and zoning and codes. So congratulate.
Speech.
I'd also like to recognize Councilman Pritchard, Councilman Pritchard, three forty-five. You were given the award of Small Business of the Year. Congratulations. That's wonderful. So.
Do a applause on that one too?
Sure. I think he's buying beer for everybody afterwards, so.
Not true.
I, I can try, right? The last thing I have, mayor and council, I'm going on vacation starting tomorrow. I will not be back until a week from this Thursday. As usual, as, as normal, you can call me if you have any concerns. I'm going to be in town, be around. In my absence, of course, Assistant City Manager Tony Irvin will be in charge. Feel free to contact her any time of the day or night and she will answer your phone calls. That's all I have, Mayor.
Revise and increase. Councilman Smith, Vice Mayor Stevens.
I, I would like to give somebody a little bit of praise and thank you, City Manager, Assistant City Manager, and then Bates Instrumentation, Dalton Carlton, for finally getting the manhole fixed on Strong. I don't have to worry about hitting it anymore. It's perfect. And I just want to say thank you. I'm glad we've got a lot of good people that, that donated their time and energy to getting that fixed. And I, I'm understanding they paid for all that themselves to get it all done. If I, am I correct in doing all that? They donated that to the city?
They did, took care of it themselves.
Okay.
It cost me a bet, but I, but it got done.
It was a good bet. I just wanted to say thank you to them and I appreciate your guys' hard work. Thank you.
Councilman Brown?
Oh, everything.
Councilwoman Harrison?
Yes, I went on a tour to, through the McAllister Regional Health Center and I was. was really impressed with what they're doing there. And two cement benches have been purchased for the North Town Cemetery, and they'll be installed whenever the city's not really busy. And I would like to thank the directors of the city crews for all the work that they've done. They've had some water breaks and leaks and sinkholes, and I think they've done a good job in getting those addressed, so thank you so much.
Councilman Pritchard?
City Manager, what is the plan, the next step with the comprehensive plan? Are we gonna adopt that, or how does that work?
We will be bringing it back for adoption, that's correct.
When do you anticipate that will happen?
The second meeting in September is the plan right now. And if I could, Mayor, could I? Councilman, could I say one other thing? We handed out the master drainage plan tonight. That was a plan that was developed with a tremendous amount of input from the general public on things that they see in our community, and that plan has now, it's in a preliminary form for your review, and we will be bringing that back at the second meeting in September also for adoption. So please review it. Any comments that you have, please get them to us immediately so that we can evaluate them and possibly make them a part of the plan. So it's a good plan.
Have we gotten a CFO hired yet?
We have not. We were turned down with our offer to a potential candidate, and we are now gonna go back out and advertise again.
What do you, I mean, are we, are we adequately, do you have the resources to hire a CFO?
We do.
I mean, in terms of whatever it is.
Compensation, benefits, we do, yes.
Same question, I don't know if I have the job position right, but the utility supervisor, is that the right title?
It is.
Okay, have we hired one of those yet?
We have not, we've interviewed. We're actually waiting on one of our employees who is testing this week, and we have a potential in-house candidate, depending on how that testing goes this week.
Good, thank you.
Mayor?
Yes. I was gonna ask the city manager, I know we ask this sometimes, but what are the requirements? Degrees in accounting for us, you know, chief financial?
You want somebody that's, minimum has a degree in accounting, you'd like for them to be past the CPA exam, and potentially a master's degree if they have it. This is a high-level position that takes a lot of skill, knowledge, and a lot of experience.
Okay, so you want him to be a CPA, is that what you said?
We would like to have him.
I heard that exam is hard, Tony, you're gonna be hard to match up. She's good, I mean, I brag on all the time. She's one of my former students too, so I'm always proud of her. I'm gonna take credit for some of it. I gotta take some credit.
Her former years, you guided her to be a CPA, right? We had a stormwater meeting yesterday, got an update on a lot of the projects that are going on. They, we contracted out two sets of work that the city couldn't get to, obviously we're limited on employees. They, it was cost about seventeen thousand, and they removed, I believe it was ninety-two tons of silt, trash, things like that, debris. We have a problem where, because some of this debris was actually trash. People are using dump sites, there was mattresses and things like that involved in it. So, you know, we, you know, we need to, number one, if that happens, we need to know it's there. Number two, if we see it happen, we need to report it. So keep keeping that in mind. There is a TIF committee meeting, committee meeting, the thirtieth at noon, and I would encourage anybody interested in that to come to it. With that, we will recess the council meeting. I would take a motion to convene as McAllister Airport Authority, motion to include approval of minutes from the August thirteenth, twenty nineteen, regular meeting of McAllister Airport Authority, confirm action taken on City Council Agenda Item C and to adjourn. Motion, Councilman Smith, and Councilman Reed, any discussion? Corriged color roll, please.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries. Now take a motion to convene as McAllister Public Works Authority, motion to include approval of minutes from the August thirteenth, twenty nineteen, regular meeting of McAllister Public Works Authority, confirm action taken on City Council Agenda Item C and one, and to adjourn. Motion, Councilman Reed, and Councilman Smith, any discussion? Corriged color roll, please.
Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries. Now take a motion to convene as McAllister Retirement Trust Authority, motion to include approval of minutes from the July twenty-third, twenty nineteen, regular meeting of McAllister Retirement Trust Authority, approval of retirement benefits for the period of August twenty nineteen, and to adjourn. Motion, Councilman Smith, and Councilman Reed, any discussion? Corriged color roll, please.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries. We're now reconvening as City Council, taking a motion to adjourn. Motion, Councilman Smith, and Councilman Reed, any discussion? Corriged color roll, please.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, we're adjourned, thanks, guys.
No questions about streets?